I would like to welcome all of you to this candidate forum this evening. I'm going to start out this evening by letting each candidate introduce themselves in just a real quick synopsis of themselves. I have several questions to ask them. We'd like to keep it to about an hour and a half if possible, not for each answer, that's just for the whole thing. But try to shoot for 8:30 to get out, and I think I have plenty of questions to get us through to that time. If you would like to speak with each candidate about something individually afterwards, that would be great. I just don't want to turn it into a board meeting or something like that. This is just a candidate forum, this isn't anything that's going on currently with the Board of Education. So with that, John, would you please start?
Yeah, here. Well, everyone. Okay. Well, good evening, everyone. I'd like to first thank the middle school and high school site council for sponsoring us tonight, the school as well. My name is John Pottest. I've lived in Cherryville for seven years now. My wife, Kim, and our two kids, Kayla and Cameron, moved here from Atlanta, Georgia. We're originally from the Midwest, in Missouri. Kim and I both grew up in the Midwest, met in college. We wanted to get back to our roots, we wanted our children to grow up in smaller community where we felt like we understood the education that was being provided to them. And my goal tonight is to extend, or not extend, but to try to do my best within the Board to try to make Cherryville the best, Cherryville Thayer Schools the best they can be.
Yeah, most of you probably know me as Mr. T., but my actual name is Mark. I've, you know, I just really thought about this for a while, and I decided that I had something to offer. I've been in every building this district has. I've taught there and taught here in Cherryville, at Lincoln Central. And I know goodness a lot about everything that goes on here. I have three education degrees, bachelor's, master's, and specialist. I've served as a superintendent, principal, a coach, teacher, and athletic director. And I just felt like I might have a little bit of a way to help the Board out. That's basically why I decided to do this.
My name is Gina Boo, and I've served on the Board for eight years. I've served on several committees within the Board. I've been on the negotiating committee, I've been on site councils. Currently, I am serving as Vice President of this Board. I also serve as a representative for USD 447 on Tri-County. I've done that for six years since Maryland went off the Tri-County Board. I went off the Tri-County Board, I've been on there for six years, serving as Vice President one of those years. And I've been the President of Tri-County for the past four years, and I really enjoy that job as well at this one. I'm committed to making sure that Thayer and Cherryville schools are the best that they can be. I've had four kids that have graduated from this school system, as well as myself. I graduated here, have four kids, and I still have two kids in grade school, so I want to make sure that it's the best that it can be for all of them, as well as for the other 800 kids that I represent.
I'm Roy Griffin. I'm retired. You've probably seen me around town, all the ones that love walking all the time. But I've been in Cherryville for 36 years. I've taught in Cherryville High School, Middle School. I taught government, American history, health, taught PE, taught at two other schools before I came here. Was also a elementary teacher in the MPE at one school, so I've taught at all three levels. Have enjoyed being in Cherryville, have made Cherryville my home. My kids have made it their home. We like living here, we like the size of the school, we like the idea that we're living in a small town, and we'd like to see Cherryville be the best school in southeast Kansas as far as test scores and provide people an opportunity to make a living with a job. The world's changed, we need to change with it. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here, and...
My name is Michael Griffin. Been here most of my life, lived away from here for a while, one of... Been here most of my life. Lived in Kansas City for 10 years, have worked on several different advisory boards. Right now, I'm working with Coffield Collision, or Coffield Community College and Tri-County Tech, which is in Bartlesville, working with them on collision repair facilities, helping students grow and become prosperous in working on cars. Before that, I lived in Kansas City, worked for an architectural millwork firm, worked with the local 1635, and was instrumental in an apprenticeship program there that helped train students that were in high school levels to become part of our cabinet-making division with installs manufacturing. I feel like that we have a real opportunity to teach kids a trade, and I feel like I fit in real well at trying to teach kids different types of trades that go into our organization. Right now, I feel like we're a little weak in that area, and we'd like to have the opportunity to have some type of vocational education here in Cherryville to help our students go further. Right now, people with college educations are having a harder and harder time getting a job. People with vocational education are in high demand right now, welders especially. Again, I'd like to thank everybody for coming here tonight and being part of this, and, you know, appreciate your time. Thank you.
All right. The first question that I have this evening, kind of lobbed you up the softball, but why do you feel you would be an asset to the USD 447 Board of Education?
Well, I think I probably should have touched on it a little bit better in my opening statements about my background. I have advanced degrees, I have a Bachelor of Science in Aviation Science, and a Master's in Aviation Safety. I've been in professional positions my whole life, I've worked for Fortune 500 companies. Not that that's what you need to be on the school board, but I'm not, you know, I've been around those types of things, making decisions, tough decisions, and sometimes those decisions aren't in the best interest of everyone, but we have to look at the greater good of the whole schools. I've been involved in various things throughout the school. I've been on Lincoln Central Site Council for five years. During that time, I proposed a junior achievement program, which I coordinated, basically raised the funds and coordinated all the efforts to teach fifth-grade students in both Thayer and Cherryville. I'm interested not only in Cherryville, I also participated and guided a team of engineers that built two science and technology kiosks at the Science and Technology Center in Independence, which I think have been very successful. And if you go there and watch the videos, you'll see my ugly face on there. I enjoy being around children, I think I have a good common sense, and I take a good common sense approach to everything I look at. I try to be as fact-based as possible. I have a good control of my emotions, I find anger to be an emotion of weakness, and I try to control it as good as possible, and I think I have a lot to offer the schools.
Same question.
Well, I touched a little bit on that. I really have spent my entire life in schools, and, you know, I find that schools are a lot alike, it's just that the names and the faces are different. I mean, these kids will prosper and be successful, but we have to help them. They won't do it on their own. I mean, the 33 years I spent, you know, eight of them were superintendent, so I dealt with children that I call Board members, and I dealt with children, students, that were very difficult, and in most cases, you can find a way to help those kids. I just see it as an extension of what I was doing in the classroom and as superintendent and principal, to see if I could help the Board out any, and that's really my only goal here, is to see that I can continue what I was doing for all those 33 years in a different format, so...
Same question?
Same question.
I think probably the main thing I have going for me at this point is experience, because when you come on the Board, the learning curve is huge, and being on the Tri-County Board, the learning curve is even larger. It is a huge learning curve when you go on the Tri-County Board. But I think probably the main thing I have is experience. I've been through the beginning of my Board term, when there was plenty of money and lots coming in, and as it's gone on, the money's dwindled, and there's cuts, and they're getting deeper and deeper. I tend to be able to see the big picture, I don't look at one group of kids over another group of kids, I don't look at one program over another program. I tend to be a big-picture person and see the big picture, see that if we cut money from these kids and give it to these kids, these kids are going to suffer. I tend to look at the big picture instead of a lot of little pictures. And I tend to take the heart, and I'm not just saying this, I tend to take the heart each and every kid, not just my kids. I have kids at both ends of the gambit. I have the kid that was in the gifted program, I have a kid that's in the opposite end. And I see the worth that each and every child has, and the worth that each and every child, the potential that each and every child has, and I realize that not every child is following down, and I realize there's a, as these gentlemen have said, and they have said, there's a way to reach every child, we need to open those doors for those children. Somehow, in some way, we need to find the key to open the door for each one of those kids, and I'm committed to doing that, because some kids, the door is easier to open with some keys than others. And we need to figure out the key for each and every child, and give them the key to open the door so that they can reach their full potential, and I'm committed to doing that for Cherryville and their students.
Same question, yeah?
I've been a teacher for 36 years. I have done elementary, middle school, high school. I've been a coach for all those years also, I've worked with all sorts of students. I've had, I've been an athletic director, where I set up a lot of schedules, set up workers, hired workers, hired officials, was well organized, set up track meets. If you went to one of my track meets, you'd know that it was done quick if I did it. If you went to one of my volleyball tournaments, if you were around there and you knew that thing was running right, run quick, and we got it over with. No one complained about any of those things. I think that I'm a guy, but if I tell you something, I guarantee you that I'll do it. Okay? This is my word. I think I'm honest. I've always been told that I'm spared from kids and from parents. I think that I've been an asset to the Board, and I've got a lot of experience dealing with even schedules, scheduling things, I've done all that. Transportation schedules, I've done that. Set up, been on several interviews with teachers, coaches, helped on hiring coaches, a lot of experience in the education field. I've been there, I've been a player, that's it.
I started out my life literally in education with my father, being a coach and teacher for a number of years. When we would come back from Kansas City, I can remember when George, Mr. Owens, was here the first time, I would talk to him extensively about getting some type of vocational education program started here. Still feel like that that's a way that our community needs to go. I think that we're, our biggest problem with this area and everything as far as education right now is we have a lack of trained workforce for individuals going into welding or any type of industrial education right now. You know, there's companies shutting down and moving their products further down the coastline, just so they can get the proper workforce to come in and work. Again, I'm really wanting to target, and I think we do an excellent job as far as educating the children here to go to college, it's just trying to find a niche for everybody to fit into, you know, and trying to get people programmed to go and, yeah, workforce. Again, that's about it. Thank you.
Round two is you. Okay, second question, and once again, if, now, guys, if you have felt like you've answered this, you can say, you know, you don't have to repeat yourself, but this is something that, what have you done, if anything specifically, to prepare yourself to become a USD 447 Board member?
Well, I suppose I've answered that, and I'm sure I have, but I got to tell you, there's a lot of good kids here and a lot of good staff here, and we need to make a way for them to do their jobs.
Having served on that, I have the experience, but I've prepared that way. But there's also, you know, I get KSB things that I read, I, you know, I do a lot of reading...
KSB meaning?
Kansas Association of School Boards.
Okay.
A lot of their material that I get that I read, I keep up to date on lots of things. Julie from Tri-County sends me lots of things, so I keep up to date with a lot of school Board issues that way, keep up to date, you know, House bills and all sorts of things that I read, and there's lots of mail. When you become a school Board member, many trees die for you. You get lots of mail and lots of things, so...
My experience as a teacher for 36 years, and been in and out of different things that we've had going on to school, and kind of organizing different things that we've had at school, several meetings that we've had, I've been to several board meetings and had input in them, and been in executive session, and know the ropes, know what's going on.
As far as preparation for school Board, I feel like that I've served on the site council at the elementary school. Again, I've served on the advisory board for CCC in Tri-County and Bartlesville, helping them guide their collision repair centers. You know, I just feel like the servant on those boards kind of giving me an insight to where different people are thinking about different options as far as the education that can benefit our children.
Gina? Gina's turn, John. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, John, who stands in front of that?
Well, like Mike, I grew up in a home of educators. My father eventually retired as superintendent of schools, and my mother still works at the Missouri Association of Rural Educators. A lot of the conversations around the dinner table were about education, so I'm no stranger to those conversations and what a superintendent and a principal talk about at home. To prepare for this evening, I did a lot of research on the Internet. I try to stay abreast of what's going on. I was on the Lincoln Central Site Council, and that really helped a lot, staying, setting up with our AYP scores and whatnot, and I think that was really helped me for this evening.
Gina, we'll start this one. What are your thoughts on teacher tenure?
I can see both sides of teacher tenure. I can see why some people like it, and I understand that, and I can see why some people don't like it, and I can understand that. Like I said, I'm a big-picture person. Personally, if I were a teacher, I would really like it. But I, you've caught me on one that I really don't have a lot of thought on. It's not up to me, it's up to our legislature, I don't have much say on that.
Once again, don't shoot the messenger, I'm just reading questions...
I know, it's one of those things that I don't have much say on. It comes down to a love, and I deal with what I deal with, with what's handed me. I see both sides of it. If I were a teacher, I would really like it. It would be an awesome thing, so, thanks.
Being a teacher, I like a next teacher. I like teacher tenure and a coach. If you're a coach, you better hope you got teacher tenure, because if you get people mad at you, not because you're a bad teacher, but they'll want to fire you for no reason at all, just because maybe you didn't play their Johnny or something, you know? I think it would be a bad deal to do away with it. I think personal feelings come into it, and I think we need teacher tenure, and I think it would be a mistake to drop that.
This is probably the biggest thing we disagree on. I think you have to do evaluations on those teachers. If they aren't performing, it's the same as if I was at my job. You wouldn't have a job later on. Coaches would have to have a certain degree of, more than just one person involved in the decision-making to let them go, but as far as I'm concerned, you know, if a teacher's not doing their job, it's time to look elsewhere for another occupation. But here in this district, I can tell you right now, there are very few teachers that I've met that I feel like wouldn't go the extra yard to help our kids. The greatest asset of USD 447 is our teachers. I really believe that. But we do have to have evaluations on those teachers, and that's probably the biggest thing that I see, the difference between my father and I.
Well, I agree with Mike on pieces of his response. I believe evaluations need to be done routinely, and if there are any faults in their performance, they need to be notified of that, and given the opportunity to try to correct the situation. I'd hate to work at a job where I feared whether or not I was coming back to work the next year, but you also have to be accountable for what you're, at your work performance. So I'm torn between the two, I understand both sides, and I'd have to put more thought into it before I could actually commit to a response.
I've dealt with both sides of this. I was the superintendent, and obviously I was a teacher, and I had some Board members that would abuse that privilege if they could have disavowed. And the tenure law in that case was very valuable, because it kept some good people from being abused because they were disliked personally, were disliked on some other level, and that's just unconscionable. And the other side, of course, is when I was teaching, I was not concerned about tenure because I truly believed I did a good job, and I felt like I was, did not need to be protected because I was very confident in my abilities and what I was doing, so... But I suspect that it's certainly a necessary evil.
Okay. Mr. Griffin, I'm sorry, I was about to call you Mr. Griffin, because you were one of my teachers. In your opinion, what are the most immediate needs of USD 447?
I, here I would agree with Mike on this, we've talked about this before, we need more training in the technical field. Right now, we're educating kids to go to college. I believe that we need to stress more in the technical field. Mr. Owens and I talked about this before I ever retired, about us developing some technical skills for our kids. Right now, there's a lot of jobs out there that make demand for that, but we don't have the skilled labor in this corner of the state to really do that. There's a lot of schools around here that are starting to do that, and I can give you an example of a few, Frontenac Schools, they're doing a thing right now where they do T-shirts, trophies, banners, they even market this thing, and it's all within the school students. And we could start out with something slow like that or easy, it wouldn't cost that much money, I don't believe, and shift right on up into something like Humboldt's doing, Humboldt's building houses, Caney's building houses, Altona's got a heck of a technical program. The house thing, we tried once before, we failed at it, and I think the reason we did that, we didn't open it up to all of our students, and another thing that we had a hard time selling the house after we got it built, that was a big sticker. But I think the way these other schools are doing it right now, they're getting a customer before they build that house, and they got a contract with that person before they ever start to build that house. If you build a house, you're, there's a lot of technical things you can do with that, plumbing, electrician work, siding, foundation, cement, just a whole lot of things, and I think Humboldt, Caney's doing that. If we have a problem, why we failed, other than the fact that we had a hard time selling the house, but I think if we talk to them, they'd be willing to share it. I think also there's a number of grants that are available to help us finance these things. We also get more money per student for the more kids you have in the technical program. So I think that can be accomplished, I think it'll take some work from us, but I think we need to get in gear and switch to the modern times, folks. Everybody will not go to college, and the ones that do, some of them don't finish, so we need to get a technical program that'll work.
You know, ensuring that each kid has an opportunity to go out and go to work, either pursue what he wants to go into as far as education, college, or vocational area, is by far the most important thing that we have here that we need to accomplish. The other thing is to encourage our families and communities to be involved with our schools. I really believe that. We've got a lot of, we try to put on a carnival down at the grade school, we had a lack of people wanting to be involved in that. I think that the more we try to involve the community and people, get people involved and taking pride in our school will help tremendously as well. And I think that's part of the Board's job, is to kind of recruit people and encourage people to be part of the community and part of the education process. The other thing is, is probably continuing and rebuilding some of our facilities at our school. You know, we've got buildings that are 60 years old or older, in some cases, that need some renovation and some updating and some keeping things in current code. That's going to be a big challenge for us as well, you know, funding that. You know, everybody should have the access to affordable education too, and, you know, I'm hoping that the state will come through and provide those funds like they're supposed to. Thank you.
I agree with both responses. I think there's an excellent opportunity for us to grow in a Botech-type situation. I think right now, our immediate attention needs to go towards trying to restore our budget and working with legislation to try to understand that rural Kansas' education is just as important as anybody else's in the state. I think we need to lobby hard to try to restore a budget that's been cut over the years and let, help them understand that one thing that's difficult for us is to raise our local option budget. We are in a community that's, I guess you could say is a poor community when you compare it to some of the other bigger schools around, and we need to take that into consideration and let our legislation know that we do matter.
I wouldn't have any objection to Botech at all. I'm quite certain that a lot of our kids would benefit greatly from that kind of training, go from there and deploy it or whatever it is. It's a good deal. So I wouldn't have any objection to anything like that. As far as, it's probably a budget question, I don't think.
Pardon?
There's probably a budget question.
Oh, maybe. I'm not revealing anything.
I'm sure there is.
I think there's probably, first and foremost is, we need to make sure our schools are safe and secure, and that's something we need to do immediately to go over it, to check them all, and that's not just safe and secure from outside intruders, but there are a few things inside that need to be done and brought, like I said, brought up the code and make sure that we're up to snuff. We need to make sure we're safe and secure there. I agree with all the gentleman that we need to pursue some kind of technical program, whether it's an in-house technical program, whether it's in conjunction with one of the area colleges or even more than one of the area colleges, we need to pursue that. And I also think that Cherryville is grossly behind in early childhood education. I've served on the Tri-County Board, I served with Jerry Hamm, and I don't know if any of you know that in Coffeyville, they have the Early Education Program, and it's named after Dr. Jerry Hamm. He is huge into early childhood education, and in talking with him and learning from him, I gleaned so much information that we really need to... him, I gleaned so much information that we really need to pursue that area too, as much as humanly possible. I know that funding is an issue. You don't get paid the same for those little guys. We don't have to service them, so we don't get paid the same. But we really need to look in and then there are many studies that will show, for lack of a better term, you get more bang for your buck at the early age than you do a little bit older. They are just little sponges and they learn and we really need to look at both ends of our spectrum. We need to look at the vocational aspect of it for the older kids, but we also need to start looking into some early childhood education for our little guys. Our three, three, four-year-olds, the little guy, pre-K.
Okay. Well, those are good answers. I hadn't thought about some of those and yet some of the points that I really thought would be raised weren't, so that kind of, that caught me off guard. Do you feel that USD 447, or what are its strengths? What are 447's strengths, but on the same token, what are its weaknesses?
I think I've already touched on that a little bit. I think our teachers are our greatest asset. There's a lot of teachers that volunteer to come in after class to work with kids that, you know, I've noticed, I know that my boy's been there, had teachers that wanted to work with him extra and he's taken up the opportunity to do that. I really do think our education at our grade schools is really done well. One of the teachers retired and wished he was still there. But, you know, that was a good thing. I mean, have really good, excellent teachers. Probably our weakness, and I don't think it's really school-related, but it's the drop in our community as far as economic growth. We don't have any industry moving in in Cherryville. We have industry moving out of Cherryville. If we had a proper, I go back to this again, a way of educating children to take care of some of these vocational areas that companies are looking for, and I can name off some of them that are just right here locally, that would still allow students to be here in Cherryville. Oslego's looking for people right now to work in the welding over there. Each one of those tank manufacturers are looking for good skilled welders. They're also looking for good coating applicators to know where, there's hallways and stuff like that in the coatings. There's a lot of different avenues that we are missing and that needs to be brought back here and we need to get our community to work. We can provide some of those job sets and grow our local community with jobs here. Our county is shrinking as well. Jobs in our county are going away. People are moving away.
That question was posed to all of us by the Montgomery County Chronicle. You'll see our responses as for those that chose to respond this week and I would like to stay with that response that I provided. And I will say that being on the site council, Lincoln Central, I saw the scores. I spoke with the teachers and the faculty and the staff and I sing their praises. We have a great group of people here. And I chose to respond to that question in a different manner. I think our strengths and weaknesses are very close together. I think our strength is that we have people that support the school and they do a very good job. I see them at the ballgames. I see them in a lot of the activities that we do and these are the faces that I see every time I go there. These are the faces that I see. And I know there's more people in there in Cherryville that can fill these front rows and I think it's a problem that we need to get, we need to get our community behind our school. How we do that, that's a difficult task and it's something I think the board needs to take into consideration and work hard to involve the community. This is their school as well.
Yeah, that's, you know, I can't add anything to what most of these gentlemen said. It's, I can tell you, I've been at about nine different schools in my 33 years and this is the finest staff that I've dealt with. And that's just from personal experience and I know that for a fact.
I definitely think our greatest asset is our staff. I know that they bend over backwards to work hard and I'm not just talking about the teachers. We have a lot of paraprofessionals. We have cooks, bus drivers, custodians, everybody. I know there are custodians at the grade school level that work just as hard at most times with little kids as teachers and paraprofessionals do. They don't have to, but they do. I know there's paraprofessionals that bend over backwards to help kids. They don't have to, but they do. Our greatest asset is our staff and our dedication to each and every student. Some of our weaknesses, I've already said, we need a technical program, we need little kids. And our facilities, they're beginning to show their age and when you go to other facilities and, you know, they have two or three gyms and, you know, some of the things that it would be nice to have, we don't have the funding for that right now, but they would be nice to have and they're dreams that we all have. Those, you know, those things would be nice, but for right now, we need to concentrate on what's the most important in that is educating our students. But I would like to thank our teachers because they do an awesome job.
Our teaching staff is great, through elementary through the high school. They've done a great job. My children went to school here. I'm real happy with them. I've been involved with those teachers. I know they're all good teachers. Also, our custodians do an outstanding job. If you look at this school, it's clean. They'll do anything for you. When I was teaching here, if I had a problem, if I went and asked them, I mean to tell you, they'd come down and get it fixed for me right away. Exceptional custodian staff. We also have a small school that's very attractive to people. One of the first things I looked at when I went, when I used to move around a little bit, was the school. If they had a good school there, I wanted to live there. I wanted to live there if it was a small school. I always wanted to live in the town that I worked in. I've always lived in Cherryville because I always worked here. I think that's important. I wanted to be a member of this town. Another, the weakness I think we have, I put these in the paper also, this question came up in the paper and we wrote about that. One of the weaknesses I did not put in the paper that I thought about later on and I kind of rolled around, I was not in bed thinking about it, the security problem of the school. I think we need to look at that and I have some different ideas on that and I won't go into that right now, but I think we need to check into our security and make it a little better than we'll be having. Going back to the, another thing about our schools that is good, we have pretty good facilities. Our buildings are well-kept and our athletic facilities are all good. The only thing I think we might be lacking in a little bit is a gym facility. And I'm not saying we go out and buy a gym next year, you know, anything like that, but I do think that we're lacking a little bit in our gym facility, although we've been able to get by what we have right now. I think our track field is as good as anybody's. We, I think we're still buying a maintenance program on that and I think we need to continue to, it looks like a new track all the time. We have as good a baseball field, softball field as anybody. Football field's really improved lately. We need to probably fix a gate on it, but other than that, it's as good as probably anybody in the league. So our facilities are great. A weakness again, I think we need to go back and look at the security of the building.
Round two. From a board of education perspective, is micromanagement good or bad?
I think you have to trust that the board has hired the proper people to make the decisions to hire those teachers and you need to stay out of their business. Of course, you need to provide oversight. It's your responsibility to represent the community. You're working off a baseline from what the state has provided and you need to stay involved, but you need to stay out of the daily operations of our faculty and staff.
That's right. When I was superintendent, the board's job was not to tell me what to do. The board's job was for me to come to a decision, make a recommendation and then if they didn't like it, they could change it. But they paid me a pretty good amount of money to make those decisions and that was my job and I did that. And the board needs to make sure that they do their job so the administration can do their job and the teachers and it just works its way down. But that's the whole purpose. The board needs to do its job, not micromanage the building.
I agree and don't know that I could say it any better, that everybody, everybody has their own position and the board's job is not to micromanage every teacher and every room and every color of carpet. The board doesn't have to know about ranch dressing and if we have red on a uniform and all the things that I've had to deal with that are just silliness. Ranch dressing is up to Mrs. E. Griffin, whether there's red on a uniform, you know, here or there, it's just a uniform. Micromanagement is not a good thing. We hire our administrators to do their jobs and if they don't do their jobs, then we need to discuss that with them and have that changed to the administrators and it works its way down. It's not my job to micromanage what any particular teacher does in their classroom. That's up to their administrator and then if something doesn't work out right, then it will work its way back up to us and we'll work it out, but it's not my job to micromanage day-to-day business.
When I was athletic director, I had people call me about different things happening and I would always say, if you talk to the coach. And most of the time, no, I haven't talked to them. Go back and talk to them and we'll see if you can get this matter solved. If you can't, then come back and see me. We'll have a meeting, talk about it, see what we can do. And it goes on up. If they don't like what we tell them, then they go on to the principal. The principal can sit in on a meeting and it goes to the superintendent. They don't like that, they go to the board. And as long as the board stays out of it in the beginning, I think it ought to go right up the chain and go to the top.
I couldn't put it any better. Mr. Thorpleson did an excellent job describing that and, you know, not here to get in daily affairs of what's going on at the school. We're here to oversee the bigger scope of things and that's my opinion on that.
Okay, here's your budget question. Basic aid for pupil is what the state gives each district for funding. This has changed dramatically over the last decade, actually causing schools to have to reduce costs. If you're familiar with the BSAPP, give us your thoughts on this subject and how you perceive it.
Yeah, the first year I was superintendent, it was in Cedarville, believe it or not. 1992, believe it or not. And I was superintendent there, the very first year I was superintendent there was under the old system. And I went in there and our mill levy was about 73 and our budget was about a million and two. And during that summer was when Judge Bullock changed the law and said that all schools had to be based by the head count and I got basic state aid for pupil. I got transportation, I got waiting for low wood enrollment waiting and so on. And so from the first year when I had mill levy of 73, the next year, I, my mill levy dropped to 32 and my budget went to almost three and a half million. Those people thought I was a genius. And of course, it was just the change in the law and that was the whole point. I finally had money to do what I was supposed to be able to do for those kids. And it irritated the heck out of me that Johnson County always thought that we should be sending our money, that our kids weren't as important as their kids. It just irritated the heck out of me, not a superintendent there, because I'd go to the superintendent meetings and this Johnson County dude would say, "God, you guys have wasted all of our money. What are you doing with all the money down there?" And I'd say, "Listen buddy, you know, you've got to treat these kids wherever they're from. Johnson County, Shawnee County, it doesn't matter." When I was superintendent, Jeff Moore was even worse. It was even worse because I had a larger transportation area and we had buses running 1,500 miles a day, 1,500 miles a day. So we had to actually extend that things. But I got off track a little bit. The budget deal, the basic state aid for pupil, it's got to be maintained. Now, look, you don't have to have a Lexus to teach a kid how to drive, but you got to make sure he has a good car. So forget the Lexus and fund the good car. That's the message.
I know that basic aid has gone down a lot since I've been on the board and it's gone down a lot the last few years and as I wrote in Mr. Taylor's paper, while I understand the lawmakers' predicament, they need to understand what it does to us also. It really, really hurts our funding. As Mr. Thorpleson alluded to, it's all a funny dance of filling out paperwork and base aid for pupils is based on waiting and poverty levels and this and that, transportation. So we might have 800 kids, but our base state aid is not based on 800 kids. It's based on full-time equivalency and all that and it's just a crazy mess. But we need every dollar we can get of that and I wish that they could bounce our base state aid up. They do not realize how much that has hurt us in the last few years. And we don't want to raise the mill levies. We don't want our taxpayers to have to pay more. We live in an extremely poor area in southeast Kansas. We live in a poor area of southeast Kansas. We can't afford to raise our LOB and our taxes for our people and we need to have our money. I mean, they need to raise our base state aid back up and that's just the long and short of it.
I think the way the state's doing it right now is you get so much money per student and I really believe that that is probably the fairest way to do it, depending on, you know, if you've got a thousand kids in school, you're going to get more money than the school's got 100. To me, that's provide equal opportunity for all of them. The problem with that has been lately that the state has not given us what we are supposed to get. And there's been lawsuit in Kansas City, I think filed that lawsuit demanding that we get, the legislature give us our funds that they're supposed to give us and that's really went up, I think, I want to say $600 a student. I might be wrong in that number, but, so I think the funding will get a little better. I think that's the fairest way to do it and as far as, I think each school ought to be accountable for those, how they spend that money. And I think, I'll tell you the truth, I really think Cherryville could do a better job with that. I think we waste a little money. And I'm not saying cut back any for education programs. I think all them need to be going, but we waste a little money on other things, I think. And we could do a lot better job with that. I could get into that, but I'm right here.
You know, the price of gasoline is, I think, that has doubled since they set the last standards as far as base pupil per student. It's at least went up a dollar more a gallon. That's really affected the schools as far as the way they can fund. The best way of doing it is by student, you know, population, not by where you live and what county you live in. It's by far the fairest way of doing it, but the money does need to be increased a little bit there. You know, again, we can increase that funding, but we still need to see results by that funding. We need to hold our administrations responsible as a community and make sure that the funding is going in the correct locations and where the money should be allocated to. That's the biggest thing that I see right now.
I understand the concept behind the base state aid per pupil formula. I've seen it, but it's complicated and I think it's a fair way of providing monies to our students. As Mr. Griffin alluded to, there is a suit now that says that we are not providing suitable education finances to our students in Kansas and I would imagine you'll see that funding per pupil increase, but with the cuts that we've had over the past few years, our children suffered and I think it's something that needs to be addressed.
This next question is a little bit vague and I'm not quite sure how to word it. I started out with, how are your pupil skills? And describe them, please, but I think it'd be more of a conflict resolution. You guys have alluded to parents calling you, Mr. Griffin, you know, questioning coaches' decisions and stuff like that. I know I've contacted teachers when my kids have been in trouble or something like, you know, in that situation. How as you as board members handle those type of situations individually? How is you as board members handle those type of situations individually?
No, you take those calls, and you tell your kids to be quiet. Mom's on the phone. It's got to be quiet. No, you, you, you listen to people. That's the first thing. You have to listen, you have to let them in, you have to let them go off steam, you have to let them get angry with you. You have to let them yell and scream and shout and cry and do whatever they're going to do. And then you calm them down, and you talk to them, and try to work through their problem. And you ask them, have they gone through the chain of command? Did you go back and talk to the teacher, the coach, the whatever? "No, I haven't done that." Well, that's where you can start. That's what you need to do. You need to go back and talk to them, and if that hasn't worked, you need to bump up the chain one. But first of all, you have to go back to the source of the itch, the problem. Go there, and you talk to them. If that doesn't work, you bump up the chain of command one notch. If that doesn't work, you bump up the chain of command one notch. You just have to understand how to work with people. I've got six kids, so I understand that there's generally two sides to every story, and then there's the truth. There's never...
You've got a husband also, right?
I have a husband. Almost thirty years. There's, there's always two sides to a story, and generally, there's the third one. So you just have to work it out. You have to let people, you have to have tough, thick skin and know that people are going to get mad at you, and they're not going to like you, and they're going to scream and shout at you and call you names, and yugly at you. It's in those with the territory.
I'd get to listen to them, take some notes, see what's concerned about. Then I think, I really believe in the chain of command. You need to totally go back, ask them if they've talked to the teacher. Usually, when, when I was at Lakeview, we had something like that come up. That's the first thing I'd say if they even went to the coach. And they'd say, most time, no. And if they went to the coach and they'd call me back sometimes, we need to, you know, I didn't get any results with them, this is what happened. And then I would say, let's have a meeting. And during the meeting, usually we've got it all resolved. Ninety-five percent of the time, we get it all resolved, and everybody leaves happy. Very seldom does anyone leave all upset and want to go to superintendent or anything. So I really believe in the chain of command, and then go right up that chain, like I stated earlier. And I'm a real strong believer in that.
I think I'd excel in that area. I'm a real good listener. Been in sales and technical support for a long time. Have had people really irate with different items and things. And usually, you know, you have to take good notes, listen to the person, let them in, hear what they have to say, and then again, revert back to, you know, the chain of command. Go back to the teacher. Try to calm them down, get them to go talk to the teacher or the coach first. After they talk to the teacher and the coach, then, you know, they can go on past that. But I think most of the time, those things are taken care of when they go back and talk directly to the individual. And not try to go around back door and get someone else involved. Go back to the person you have the problem with.
I manage a group of engineers at CESTA my whole day, is conflict resolution. And the biggest piece of that is just to listen and try to put yourself in that person's position. You, you have to stay calm. You have to understand where they're coming from. And as a board member, you have to remember that you are a board, you're not an individual. You, you can listen, you can provide them guidance on how they should report this, work their way through the system. But never, never respond as if you are the voice of the school when, when you're actually a member of a board.
Yeah, I used to have trouble with some board members who would, who would promise somebody something. And the fact is, you got one vote. You can use it however you want, but you got one vote. So you don't promise anything. I, I was a principal for, for eight years, I was a superintendent for eight years, and I handled so many of those things on a daily basis that I can't even begin to imagine. And when I got here, I had six kids in my program, I left at ninety-six. So I think I, so I did what I did.
I can say I learned from my first phone call on the board that nobody warned me that was going to happen, and I didn't have, didn't have a ton of what to say. You know, make a phone call. I'm going to give right on, you keep your dad. Because you are just one of seven, and if there is a proper protocol you have to follow. So you learn that one real fast.
Okay. Mr. Thorpleson, you described the years you were principal and superintendent. Should there be a term limit on board of education members? I guess I got aligned by doing that, but...
Is that a trick question?
Uh, that's a question that was submitted. Don't shoot the messenger, once again.
Well, if you can fix the board member that you have a term limit, sure.
Kind of like Congress voting their own race?
I don't know. I would say probably after eight years, it would make some sense to get some fresh blood in there. There's a lot to say for experience. I got much better at the job that I was doing the longer I did it. That was just a fact. I thought I was a genius. I was twenty-nine years old when I was a principal. And I found out about five years later that I wasn't a genius I thought I was. And then, and then I went to the superintendent, and I thought I was really a genius then, and guess what? I got better. And I got better at handling people, situations, and I got better at dealing with conflict and so on and so forth. And I assume a board member would, would operate in the same manner. So I just have to think about that for a while. And in most cases, people who are dedicated enough to do a board job, and if they really want to do it, and they're, they're, they've done a good job, let them do it. It's hard not to get good people to do this as it is. So if you've got good people there, I guess I would say let them do it.
Same question.
Obviously, I don't think so. And the reason I don't think so is because there is such a learning curve, and there's always people that are, that don't want to run again. You're always getting in new bloods. But by having some experience on the board, there's generally not something that's going to come up that somebody hasn't said, "Well, you know, a few years ago, we had this come up. This is how we handled it, it worked out well, or this is how we handled it, and it didn't work out so well." Just having the knowledge of, and the wisdom, I would say the wisdom, of those who have served, as long as they haven't been on there for thirty or forty years. You know, science changed enough that it would be hard to keep up with. But no, I don't think there should be a term limit. There's always, there's always a shuffle. But having the steadiness of a few people that understand the job, and a wisdom of things that have happened in the past, and understanding how to resolve those is valuable.
I don't think there should be a term limit. I think the longer you're on there, the more experience you get, the more, the better person you are on there, and the more experience you have, and you know how to make decisions that much better, I think. I think experience is very important. We wouldn't have it if we put term limits on it.
I'd really have to think about the question a little bit more. I see good and bad in both things. Very difficult to make a decision this quick.
Well, I think a lot of, a lot of school systems struggle to fill their board positions, and people just walk right into those positions. In this election, there was twelve people that wanted a position. I don't know what that means. You can take that for whatever it's worth. Do they want people off, or do they care enough to where they want to be on, on the board and make changes? I, I would like to think that the people on the board, if they've just got to a point where they can't provide anything for the school, that they were, they're professional enough, that they would step aside, or let the voters decide who should stay or go.
Okay. Oh, it's Mr. Griffin, I'm sorry. I fell off on... Well, segue right into that one, I had to go...
I don't have a problem, you get him first, I'll stop.
Okay, this one is, is a subject that just bothers me personally quite a bit. But it's something that, unfortunately, in our society today, we have to deal with, and it's just insane. But there is or has been a bill before the Kansas legislation that would purportedly require any state, county, township, or city building that has a posted "no guns" sign could only do this if there was a metal detector and an armed guard at the primary entrance. What is your view about guns in school and on school property? Secondly, if we arm schools, what about the buses?
I'm against guns in school. And the reason for that is, you don't know who might get a hold of that gun. If someone was here in the security yard, and somebody took the gun away from them, hard telling what kind of damage, well, there'd be a lot of damage, I guarantee you. If we had a security guard, I wouldn't want him in the building. He would have to be outside, I think. Things like Walmart does on their tire changing, where you go up and you go to a booth, and you go to that booth first, and you've got to check in at that booth, and then they, they bring your car in. Would probably be a good deal, because the person would have to go to the booth first, get clearance to get through the door. And then after that, if he, if he wanted to do some damage out there, he could probably get that security guard. But we could have time maybe to get, get the police. We've got cameras and everything else out there. I think we need another checkpoint somewhere along the line to stop that. But I'm not in favor of having loaded guns in schools. We're not trained for that, and they could take you down and tell you about training you at some class or something. And, but I still don't, I, I just think that's a bad deal. I think if we train somebody to do that, if they want, want a trained guard out there, put them in a little booth out there or something before they get to the door. I think we've got fairly good security, but I think that's one of the things. Now, Union High School, I seen a deal where they put bulletproof, I don't know what this would cost us, but they put a bulletproof deal on the windows to... But they claimed a bullet couldn't go through it. It looked just like, just like tinted a window, it looked like on TV when I seen it. I don't know what that cost, but that might be something we'd look into too. But definitely not having, having guns in the school.
Guns don't belong in school. Again, someone could misplace the gun, have the gun taken away, he can do a lot of damage. No sense in having a gun anywhere near the school. You know, as far as a metal detector goes, they're wanting that.
Kevin, what question do you have? Metal detector? Uh, yeah, walking through a metal detector, basically, and coming in at school.
You know, that may not be a bad idea, but at the same point in time, there's, there's a lot of things that you can get away with that, you know, the metal detector may not pick up. I, just guns in school are a bad idea.
Well, I grew up with guns in my, in my house, with my family. I teach my kids to be respectful of them, and I, I love to hunt. But guns have no place in the school. I'm adamantly opposed to that. I think the assumption is, is that if you had a gun in the school, you would be protected as if the person that pulled out that gun wouldn't be nervous and shoot it and hurt more people than, than actually what the threat was in the first place. Sandy Hook and Columbine, they were tragic, and steps need to be taken to secure our schools. But having a gun in the school's not the answer. Get a new gun.
I am not opposed to having a gun in the school if it is in the trained hands of a security officer. I don't know that I would want every teacher carrying the token of gun around. But I, I have no problem with an off-duty officer, such as a Cherryville off-duty officer, or a Deering County off-duty officer, a properly trained police officer-type person. I do not have a problem with them walking through our school. They have been through training, they know what they're doing. It's not just somebody that's gone down to the local gun shop and taking a half-day class. It's not somebody like that. It would have to be a trained officer. But there, again, your budget constraints on that are real tight. They, you don't get any help with that. So if, if we were to do something like that, it would be Cherryville doing it. I would like to say, I happen to know we're head and shoulders above a lot of people around us in the area in the way of security. I was at a meeting the other day and absolutely blown away to hear some of the people that we actually go to their schools and play ball and things around the security measures that they don't have in place that we do. I was absolutely flabbergasted. We are so far ahead and advanced of any other school district around here in our security measures. It is amazing.
Okay, and once again, I hate asking that question, but unfortunately, that's the society we live in today. This, I would take one of these and pass it down. This is our next question. What I'm handing them is a list of six items. The first one being employee compensation, the second being facilities, third being extracurricular activities, the fourth being state financial aid, the fifth being teacher-student ratio, and the sixth being new educational electives or programs. And I'd like for them to take a moment and rank in order that they feel that, that those are important. To see what, what their, what their thoughts are on where we should be heading as a school district, and what is actually the, what, what they believe is the most important to them. And when you're ready, it's Mike's turn, I believe, isn't it? Oh, yeah, briefly, yeah, just, I realized that with it being six points, you could go on quite a while. Yeah, briefly?
I would start out with the state financial aid. We have to have funding from our state to have equality of education here. The second one would be new education electives or programs. And what I'm talking about there, again, is the vocational aspect of this. We'll have to have funding for it. The student-teacher ratio would be three with my, with me. I'm a really strong believer in having that, you know, pretty scaled down where you have more one-on-one time with teachers. Number four would be the facilities. I think our facilities are in good shape, you know. Going on about the security about earlier, we are like years ahead of a lot of schools here in this area as far as the security within our school. Number five would be employee compensation. I, I think that, you know, right now, the gap between teachers and administrators keeps getting wider. And, you know, the gap between the teacher and the administrator needs to get narrowed up a little bit. And then extracurricular activities, naturally, I mean, kind of have ballgames and, and plays and extracurricular activities for kids to go to as far as, you know, even at the grade school, the musical that we have down there. You know, got to have those things funded as well.
Would like to preface my answer by saying that none of us here would, would take these in this order and focus on just these things till it was completed. We would work all together on all six items to ensure that they happen. I think, first off, we're in the business of teaching children. That's our number one priority. So our teacher-student ratio is, is number one for me. That has to be followed by the state financial aid. We can't do that without the aid to be able to do that. Number three is, is looking at new educational electives or programs. Quite a few of us talked about expanding some of our programs into a low-tech type of school. I think that's important. Employee compensation is a big item. I think we need to be competitive with schools of our size in the area. We don't have to follow, we can set the pace if possible. Facilities, I think we have good facilities now. They are aging. There is a life limit to them. There's a point where investing in those schools is no longer financially, doesn't make financial sense, and we need to look forward to that. That's not something that's going to happen right away. And all the more reason we need to take that into consideration now. We need to start that planning process. And last, I think the extracurricular activities are very important to the students, but in a ranking like this, they certainly come in last to me.
You know, for me, the former superintendent, the state aid is everything. Everything comes from that, everything. When I split the kindergarten classes into three different classes for the two student-teacher ratios because I got that funding for the extra kids. You have to have funding first, and then you can do a lot of these other things, like the student-teacher ratio, which we, for me is the second one. I used to tell the kindergarten teachers it was like pulling a wagon up the hill with six puppies in it, and then you added a puppy, and you...
six puppies in it, and then you added a puppy, and you added more puppies, and pretty soon you had seventeen puppies. You couldn't get either. You always had to stop and fit the puppies back in the wagon. And that's what happens with these kids. There is no way to educate those kids when you get X amount of kids in a room with a single teacher, and even with a pair. You have to be real careful of that, because if you want to accomplish what you're accomplishing, which is the education of the kids, you can't do it dragging seventeen puppies up the hill in a wagon, because they just jump out all the time. And that's the way I used to try and explain it to them, and it seemed to make sense to them. But so, the stand-in and the student-teacher ratio, you know, the others are really all conglomerated in there together. And one thing about these, the extracurricular, those are very important to our kids. And some of those kids are kept in school because of those. And I know for a fact that some of them pass their classes because of those, because they want to play. And if they don't pass their classes, they don't play, and it's more important for them to play. So, what do they do? They go pass their classes. So, in that way, that's a pretty important thing. And if it takes keeping the kid out for football to get even a C or even a D rather than an F, go for it. You know, get him something to shoot for. I mean, if they want to play, make them pass things, and they'll do it.
Obviously, I think this is a hard question. It's pitting one thing against another. How do you pit children against a facility that's in need? It's a really tough question. It's a fluid question, because some of it changes, you know, from year to year. If you have a facility that's in dire straits, you're going to have to fix it before you can worry about something else. It's a fluid question. Obviously, for me, it's a tough one, because I borrowed Mr. Tocleson's pen, and I wrote down things, and now I've changed it. So, state financial aid is really important, because we couldn't function without state financial aid. We don't have a lot to do about that. I can talk with my representatives and my senators and things. I can't go up there and vote for them. So, that one's a hard one. New educational electives or programs is very important. Student-teacher ratio is very important. We're blessed in Cherryville to have that stayed pretty small. That's very important. Employee compensation and facilities are both extremely important. We need to keep our good employees. We've tried as a board to make Cherryville one of the more lucrative places to begin your teaching career, and it is in this area. It's one of the better spots to start out your career in, and we've tried to turn that up. We've had some tough years, and we've had to make some nasty decisions on that front that were not fun. They had to be made at the time, and we've tried to make up for those. Extracurricular activities, like Mr. Tocleson said, sometimes that's what keeps a kid in school. I have that as number six, but sometimes in light of things, it can be higher than This is a tough one for me. But definitely, new educational electives, student-teacher ratios are right at that.
State financial aid is my first one, and we have to have that to have anything else. It's a must. Two of the new educational electives, I went over that before and talked to you about technical training for our students, and hopefully, they can get out and get a job with that type of training. The world's changing, and we need to change with it. The third one, teacher-student ratio, very important in order to get the learning concept over into the students. I know coaches, I was told one time, coaches want a one-to-eight relationship. You've got twenty-four kids out, and you want three coaches, you know. I think that's probably what you need. I remember one time here at Cherryville, a long time ago, when we didn't have, we had one male PE teacher, one female PE teacher, and I had a health class with forty kids in it, crammed in one little room down there, and I had to stand sideways and slide up and down the class to get in there. Bad student relation, I mean, teacher-student ratio. On the other hand, if you have a big room, and you have something like a weight room, where you, I've had twenty-eight, thirty kids in there, but I put them on platforms where you keep them right there all the time, keep four or five of them working on that platform all the time. So, I think student ratio is very important, teacher-student ratio, for learning. Four, employment, employee compensation. You have to have that to keep good teachers, I think. No one wants to come to a school that's paying less than what other schools are paying. Teachers don't, I don't feel like teachers make enough money the way it is, and it's too bad we can't pay them more, you know. But there's a lot of rewards beyond the paycheck, you know, that I could go into. Facilities, I think our facilities are adequate. Like I said before, our gyms lack them a little bit, but I think I'd put it five, six extracurricular activities, and that probably sounds strange coming from me since I was a coach, but I put it six. It's probably not as important as the other things here, but I do think it's important. It keeps kids in school. Our goal ought to be to have 100% graduation, and we need all weekend to keep kids in school. And if it means extracurricular activities, let's load it down and get as many kids involved as we can. We need to recruit kids to those things. I know our FFA program, we go around and we really recruit kids to it. We've got a good FFA program here, and we need one. Extracurricular activities, I think it's important to keep kids in school, and to keep their grades up. And they develop a lot of things with extracurricular activities. You play football, you learn something out there. You learn what it feels like to have a forearm in the mouth, and you learn what it takes to get back up off the ground and say, "Just try it again," you know. And that's what the world's all about. You're going to get knocked down. You're going to have to get back up.
Thank you. You have my first question. I think Mike took that one first. Getting down to just about a finished time here. If a board member has a family member employed by the school district, tell us what the pros and cons of that would be.
Well, I think it's great to see family members in the community. We're kind of a large family in itself, but I think you have to make that separation. They can't report directly to one another. There's a problem, you know, with nepotism, and probably, you should assume that there's tight bonds with those two people. Doesn't mean that there is, but you should assume that and take it as such. I'm not opposed to the thought of more husband-wife teams, father-and-son, you know, those type of relationships.
I bet in all eighteen years that I was in administration, I always had a board member, always had a board member, in many cases, more than one board member who had family members that were employees of the district. It was a very common thing. And I think in districts like this, it is a very common thing, and I don't think it's a clue anybody from offering their services to the board.
I think to borrow the answer from Mr. Tocleson a little, it would depend on the board member. Some can handle it. I've served on the board with people that have had some daughter, son-in-law, daughter-in-law, brother, sister that taught, and it was not a problem. I can see with some people and their personality types, it might be, it would just simply depend on the board member. The only thing I can say is having had to sit in on some less-than-fun executive sessions, it could maybe get a little hairy there, and I can see where people would have to recuse themselves from the conversation and step out of the room at certain times, but as long as they were going into it wide-eyed and knowing that that was going to be a possibility, they have just as much right to run through the board as I do, but they have to keep that in mind.
I would not have a problem, because my daughter's a teacher, so I think she did a good job, and I think her evaluation's always been good. So, as long as you evaluate, and I'm not going to say anything, I know if you think I'm in, I would step out of the situation if it comes to anything like that, and I wouldn't get involved in putting on there.
I don't have a problem with family members being part of the board. It happens. Like I was a sister that teaches, you'd have to exempt yourself from that situation and walk away, let other people make that decision. That's my stance on it.
Final question that I have. What most intrigues you about becoming a USD 447 board member?
Well, I really am surprised at myself that I went into files, because I've served schools in every way you could possibly serve them throughout my career. I loved being a teacher much more than I loved being a superintendent, believe it or not. And I loved being a teacher more than I loved being a principal. I was probably better at it with the kids. And I just was intrigued by all those years when I sat there as a superintendent thinking, "You're an idiot." And now he can sit there and look at me and think, you know, "You're an idiot." Yes, I'm sure. So, I just thought, I just really thought I had something that I could offer. I had certainly a unique experience, having done almost everything in service that you can do, and this seemed to be the last logical step.
I think what intrigues me the most is being able to serve the people in my community and listen to what they have to say and try to be their voice. I love people. My husband and I pastor churches, so obviously, I love people. I care for people. I have six kids, two of them adopted, so obviously, I love kids and I care a lot about kids. I want to do what's best for them. Someone once asked me how many kids I had, and I said, "As a mom, I have six. As a board member, I have eight hundred and some." And that's how I look at it. What intrigues me the most is being able to be their liaison and their stand-in in Cherryville. Those little kids can't go up and stand and talk for themselves, and I want to be their voice. I want to be what's best for the kids. I'm not here to serve any agenda. I'm not here to, I don't have anything to say, except I want to do what's best for the kids, what's best for the school system to see it grow. And my love of little kids and love of people would be what intrigues me the most about wanting to be a servant for my community.
I have five grandchildren in this school, all in, two of them middle school, and the others are in grade school. I want to see the best thing for them, not only for them, but the other students in our, in Cherryville and there. I think we need to provide the best education possible. I'm the type of person that believes in saying what I believe, and I'm not a person who will rubber-stamp everything and agree with everything that somebody else says. I'm my own person. If I use common sense, and that's what I go on, and that's what I thought when I became a board member at Cherryville. Schools have been good to me. I've been here for a long time. I like the community and thought I needed to pay something back, and I think I'd be a good member.
I enjoy seeing children succeed. I enjoy seeing mentally aged adults succeed. When I was at Kansas City, when I graduated from PSU with grad, a degree in technology, we moved to Kansas City. Probably the greatest thing I ever had happen was I had a guy come to me and ask me to serve on the apprenticeship board for the local sixteen thirty-five. In doing that, I've seen a lot of young kids that got involved in their communities, got involved in teaching them skills, and watching them grow. And I think after watching that and seeing that happen, and then being able to go on from here and working with other community colleges and Tri-County Tech down in Bartlesville, it's just made me want to get active and part of our community. I've always wanted to be active in our community, have been, like I said, before we even moved here. I know I spent, been, Mr. Owens is here, for a good hour and a half one night trying to talk to about some type of vocational education here, and watching our children grow is my main primary purpose.
Well, I've struggled with that question. I lay it night, and I wonder why I'm doing this, and people continuously remind me, "So, why would you do this to yourself?" All the aggravation that comes along with this. I've enjoyed watching the kids grow up. I've been here for seven years now, and I'd like to see them be the best that they can be, and I think I can help do that. I can tell you what doesn't intrigue me is public forums where I have to speak. I'm not a public speaker, unfortunately. This is how you judge me, and I'm doing the best I can. I also hate that it's a political process, that there's self-promotion, which I'm not good at. But I hope that what I can provide to the kids is beneficial, and I'll do the best I can.
Yep. That's all the questions that I have. Could we give them, please give them a round of applause. And on behalf of USD 447 and the Cherryville Middle High School, thank you for coming out, and I hope you can make a more informed decision now. And we'll be back. Good night.